Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, July 23, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 9, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Present.
Mr. Hughes has been excused. Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. St. Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Orozco, I have not heard from. Mr. Moretti?
Present.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every and just as one.
Mr. Trouply, can you please swear in the professionals, please?
Chairman, I'm happy to say we have a full slate tonight. Mr. Mallon, Mr. Conlon, Ms. Fearon, Ms. Beemel, Vince Warren.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, June 25, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, St. Clemente, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. St. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Vouchers?
No vouchers this evening.
Thank you. Correspondents?
Yes, I do have some correspondents. The first item is a letter from Mr. Gegenbach. He is the last application on tonight's agenda. He said, "Based on the review comments of our application for use variance by T&amp;M Associates and Leon Esavaki &amp; Inc. Consulting Engineers, we've decided to withdraw our application and halt the process. Please remove this from the zoning board calendar scheduled July 23, 2018."
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have to do anything with that? The next item is from...
Construction business.
The next one is from Mr. McGowan. He is the attorney for the townhomes at Eagle Oaks, and he had actually sent a letter on Friday requesting that we proceed, or he be allowed to proceed even though their taxes are not paid. We told him he couldn't, so today I got a letter saying, "Thank you for your consideration and prompt response to our letter request of last Friday with respect to the payment of taxes. I understand and respect your position and need to confer with my client and others as to how we can best be able to proceed further at this point. In view of your position in this matter, I respectfully request that our application be withdrawn from this evening's agenda and that we be rescheduled to the next available hearing date, by which time we hopefully will have been able to formulate an acceptable resolution of this impediment. Upon receipt of confirmation as to our next hearing date, we agree to republish the notice in the Asbury Park Press and renotice all affected property owners and listed utilities and public entities as are entitled to receive the notice of the hearing. Thank you for your courtesies and cooperation."
Okay.
So they need to be carried to another date.
I would wait until the taxes are paid, please.
Okay, we can do that.
But they'd have to renotice.
They're gonna have to renotice anyway.
Okay. So we'll just wait on that.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last item I have is a follow-up. I had spoken to Mr. Butler, and I sent everybody an email regarding a special meeting for L&amp;L Paving. He just sent me an email this evening and said, "Did you have a chance to speak to the board and its professionals about scheduling a special meeting for my client's application?" I did check with all the professionals, and it looks like Monday, October 29, is the best date for everyone. Do we need to get a consensus of the board members?
October 29. Couldn't get that any sooner?
Well, our problem is, we're scheduled for August 27.
Correct.
September, you have a holiday on a Monday, and you also have a Jewish holiday the next Monday. So our meetings in September are September 17 and 24. October, you have Columbus Day, so it's either October 1 or 29. So...
Does it have to be on a Monday?
Yes, for the professionals. That's the problem.
Yeah, no, I figured that.
So if you want to try for October 1, we can... I don't know if everybody's good for the 1st? Oh, no, Jack's not available on 1st. That's why we went to the 29.
October 29.
Yes. And right now, there's nothing on October 22, so I was hoping to leave that open for them, and then we would have a meeting back-to-back on their application.
Okay, then let's do that.
Okay.
Go ahead and put them in on the 22nd, then.
Okay.
Or whatever it is.
And the special meeting for the 29?
Yes.
Okay, I'll send everybody a reminder tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
That way, we can hopefully get that done.
We are gonna meet in August.
Yeah, the 27th of August. I think we got two meetings August, right?
Yes, August, we have August 13 and August 27.
And then they're the only one on the 27th, correct?
There is a pool application on before them because we're so backed up at the board, I had to stick them somewhere, so...
Is it an existing pool?
No.
This is a new pool application?
Yes.
Should be able to get through that. Jack?
Yes?
Jack, have you seen that pool application for the 27th?
That's Quequod.
Yes.
Do you think we'll be able to move that pretty quick, or no?
He's one on the corner lot, on a bend in the road.
Yes.
So it's a corner property?
Yeah. It's not a real... I don't think complicated one.
Sir? I'm sorry, I coughed. You don't think it's a complicated one?
No.
Have you checked all the elevations?
Well, as much as was on the map. You want me to see if I can get some more elevations?
Yeah, I haven't seen it, so... But that's usually what we wind up with, is elevation problems.
All right, we'll check it.
Okay. So, yeah, definitely. And then don't put anybody on the 23rd.
Nope.
Just L&amp;L.
Okay.
Is that okay with the professionals?
22nd is our regular meeting, 29th is a special meeting.
I'll send you a reminder tomorrow.
Yes, please.
And that's all I have for correspondence.
I don't need to announce the two cases that are being withdrawn, right?
No.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Applications before the board. Case number BA 0420X2, James R. Entile. Extension of time. Applications of James R. Entile as applicant-owner seeking second extension of time on preliminary and final site plan approval for warehouse facility on premises known as Block 177, 28.01, 1,008, Route 33. Mr. Cohen?
Good evening. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Todd Cohen. I'm the attorney for the applicant, James Entile. You might recall, this application for use variance was first approved in 2006 for warehouse with multi-tenants. Site plan was approved in 2008, and last year, the applicant sought, and the board granted a one-year extension of time. The owner was finally trying to develop the site. In that year, which expires tomorrow, the applicant did obtain NJDOT access permit. They had to get a new one. It was issued on April 27 of this year. They have resubmitted to the Howell Township Zoning Board engineer and received a letter of compliance on July 10, and they're now working with the Howell Township Engineering Department to secure performance guarantees. They have to clean up some items, we need a couple deeds, with Mr. Savino's office, and then the bonds will be issued. So, in light of the fact that the extension runs out tomorrow, we're obviously not gonna get that map signed or done or signed off on by then, so I would request another extension. Obviously, my client doesn't need a year. I like six months just for the heck of it, but I think that would be sufficient.
Mr. Mallon?
He's correct. This one was very complicated because it started with a minor subdivision and a site plan. Went through it, and then he had to get a new DOT application. He's now ready, I would imagine, six months enough, Scott? Todd, what do you think?
I would think so.
Yeah, I mean, right now, he's done really with whatever the board has requested. He's really, and he's got most of his permits, he's just in hands now of engineering the process.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension for a six-month period of time.
Okay.
I'll second it. Sounds reasonable.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. St. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, case number BA 18-12, How Baptist Church, Inc. variance to replace existing sign. Applicant of How Baptist Church, Inc. as owner and applicant seeking a bulk variance approval to replace a five-foot by five-and-a-half-foot sign with new four-foot by eight-foot sign on premises known as Block 41, Lot 39, 1554 Maxim Southern Road. Expiration date, September 18, 2018. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Before we go any further, I need to let Ron know, and you as well. I know this gentleman is a surveyor. I've worked with him in the past. I don't feel compromised or incapable making a fair decision, but I think it should be put out there if he objects or you object.
It's up to Mr. Cohen.
We have no objection. Mr. Hus is here as a representative of the church as well as a surveyor. I'm just gonna put a few facts on the record. I don't think there's any problem whatsoever.
Okay. Mr. Trouply?
I'm fine with that.
Thank you. You may continue, sir.
Thank you. Todd Cohen for the applicant, How Baptist Church, Inc. To my right is Ronnie Van Hus. He's a land surveyor who worked on the plan, is also a member of the church. He is my witness. This evening, we have a very, very, very brief presentation to address the questions raised in Mr. Mallon's letter of May 21, and I would also just point out that we have received Mr. Matt Howard's report and also today's memo at 8:57 this morning from Mr. Herman.
Yes, sir.
I was hoping you got a copy of that?
Yes, sir.
Was that very self-explanatory?
Want to swear your professional...
With that being said, yes, I'd like to have Mr. Hus sworn.
Thank you, sir. Your testimony this evening, for a firm, will prove the whole truth, nothing but...
I do.
State your name for the record.
Ronald Van Hus.
You want to qualify him real quick? Just, I know, he's a licensed surveyor in the state of New Jersey.
That's true.
Any engineering or planning?
He's just a surveyor.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's... And Ron, you're also a member of the church and authorized to be here this evening by the applicant. Is that correct?
I'm one of the elders in the church.
Thank you. And you're familiar, obviously, with the property and the application this evening, and you briefly reviewed Mr. Mallon's letter of May 21 with me. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And basically, we're looking to remove an existing 15-square-foot sign, replace it with a 26.7-square-foot sign. Any variance is required because you can only have one sign of five square feet in a residential zone. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And the reason we are replacing the sign?
The old sign is just aesthetically bad. It's just kind of falling apart. Doesn't look good.
And the new sign would obviously be more aesthetic and easier to see from the road. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And is also your intent to meet the setback requirement? There was a comment in the letter that had to be at least setback 10 feet. Obviously, as a surveyor, we'd be able to plot that on the plan, and we can comply with that.
That's right.
There was also a comment about the bushes that were there. I think there's one big bush that is the intent to remove that. Is that correct?
That's correct, uh-huh.
And no new landscaping is proposed?
No, sir.
There's no lighting proposed?
No, sir.
And as far as you know, and we'll make sure there's no impact on any sightlines along Maxim Southern or Victory Road. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
It's also the church's intent to retain the second sign that exists on the property on the southeast corner of Maxim Road and Oak Glen Road. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And what is the reason you want to keep that sign?
Well, that sign is on the corner. I've actually had folks drive through that intersection, see our sign, and then ask where is the church. You can't see the church at all from that corner. It's just so many... There's a big conservation easement on that corner, and it's large stand of trees, and it's very difficult to see the church.
Okay, so it would definitely help so that the people looking for the church could find it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And finally, we did see Mr. Herman's memo. The church has been involved, working with the township for site distance at that intersection, and Mr. Herman had no objection to the request to keep that sign. Is that correct? I have nothing further of this witness.
The only thing I'm gonna ask, and taking Mr. Herman's comment at the last of his letter, it's probably gonna have to be Mr. Mallon to address that, but as far as illumination of the sign in the future?
Well, the only thing I would say is if the sign's illuminated, it just would be directed in a direction so that it does not shine in the auto-traveled ways.
Well, could that go?
Most of the time, we have no objection to the illumination. It would be exterior lit, though I would take it with a small spotlight.
That's right.
Usually what is done. And Mr. Herman suggested he was concerned about the sight distance from Victory, and he gave a choice. Tell you the truth, they're better off if they just work with Mr. Herman.
Yes.
Rather than myself.
Okay.
Because they can go physically in the field and see what... They might have to move it in a little bit to keep that sight distance off of Victory as you look down towards Oak Glen.
Okay. My only thing, I'm trying to avoid another variance.
Right.
Can we just put the illumination at a future time and they...
Yeah, that's what I mean.
They could deal with the township engineer on that.
Correct. Well, yes, as long as you make a condition, if it's illuminated in the future, that the lights be angled in a position not to shine in the traveled ways with the vehicles.
Okay.
That would be really the way I would do it.
Okay.
And they could add it in the future, and they'll have to come back to the board.
Okay.
We appreciate that. The applicant doesn't have plans to do it now, but they may want to illuminate in the future, so I appreciate that very much.
Trying to head that... Does the board have any problems with that?
No, the difference in the size of the signs is only, it'll be 16% bigger. Big deal.
Yeah.
Right.
How about my planner? Ms. Jennifer, do you have any comments?
I do not.
Now, do...
Maybe I don't. Maybe the mic doesn't work. I do not have any comments, no.
Thank you. My only question is, doesn't our ordinance require plantings around the sign?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Do you plan on putting plantings around the sign?
We did not. We requested the waiver of that, according.
Do you have a problem with that?
I mean...
It's just a maintenance issue for us more than anything.
I think you should put plantings around the sign.
There's plantings there now.
Yeah.
I mean, there's one big ugly bush there, now if you look at the picture we showed.
Okay, well, we can get rid of that and put something nice-looking.
Antelines are nice. Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Cohen?
No objection. No, that'll be fine.
Put some seasonal flowers. It's a planting.
Yep.
Is that okay, Sherry?
Seasonal flowers won't last. We usually do ask for a couple shrubs, just so you have a four-season plants there. Just seasonal flowers, only problem is the deer. So definitely look at the, you know, deer-resistant list before you shop.
Okay.
So a couple of plants?
Yes. Shrubs.
I would recommend working with Sherry, make sure it's something that's aesthetic but will last a little bit.
Okay.
We have a landscape architect in our church. I think we can work out something that will be more than acceptable.
That's perfect.
Any other questions or comments from our professionals?
No, sir.
Board, do you all have any... Okay, I need a motion to open the public.
Make a motion to open to the public.
Second. Motion by Mr. Armata, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none. Anyone from the public wish to come forward and ask a question or make a comment in this application? Seeing none. Can I have a motion to close?
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Armata, seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You'd like to do a summation?
I think everything's pretty clear. I'll pass on the summation.
Professionals, any further comments?
No, sir.
Board? What's the pleasure of the board, then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, and I'd like to include the illumination in the variance and the bush that you agreed upon, and my motion is to approve.
I'll second it, and I think putting the lighting into this at this time will make it easier in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. St. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Good job, Mel.
Next case on the agenda, case number BA 18-09, Associates Business Park, Use variance preliminary and final major site plan. Application Associates Business Park, LLC, is applicant and owner seeking a use variance preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct two office warehouse buildings less than 40,000 square foot each and associated improvements on premises known as Block 164, Lot 1804, Oakson Road. Expiration date, September 18, 2018. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Todd Cohen, attorney for the applicant, once again.
This was a Cohen night, huh?
I thank Eileen for scheduling the way she does. Sometimes it helps out with saving time and scheduling.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so for the record, Todd Cohen, representing the applicant, Associated Business Park, LLC. My client purchased a site in 2009, is now seeking a use variance and preliminary and final site plan approval to construct two multi-tenant buildings about 20,000 square foot each with multi-tenant spaces of about 2,500 square feet. Multi-tenant structures are permitted in the SED zone, but they require a minimum square footage of 40,000 square feet per building and 5,000 square feet per tenant. The site was previously approved in 2007 for 11 detached storage warehouse buildings totaling 32,000 square feet, but that was never developed. My clients presently own and operate four other facilities similar to what's proposed this evening, three are freehold, one in Old Bridge, and they have a strong working knowledge of the multi-tenant facilities of this nature. I have a wonderful cast of experts with me this evening. Our goal is to make a thorough presentation, but very quickly, and to be able to answer all the questions raised by your professionals in their reports, which we have seen, and any questions that the board may have this evening. To my right is John Plaskonka, a professional engineer from Concept Engineering. I also have with me this evening David Collins, the architect from Felts and Collins Architecture, Scott Kennel, a traffic engineer from McDonough Ray Associates, who's testified before your board many times. As has Allison Coffin, our professional planner from James Higgins and Associates. I also have a representative of the applicant, Harold Lebault, here to answer some questions raised in Mr. Mallon's letter about particular site use and stuff like that.
Mr. Cohen, you want to bring all of your witnesses forward, and we'll swam them in?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea, just for everybody at once, and then we can go from there. We'll start with John and go forward.
Raise your right hand, please. For the testimony of this evening, the whole truth, nothing but true stuff we got.
I do.
I do.
Starting with you, happy name for the record.
Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates.
Thank you.
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N, with James W. Higgins Associates.
Harold Lebault, L-E-B-W-O-H-L.
Sorry, Harold, do you want to say anything?
David Collins, Felts Collins Architecture.
John Plaskonka, professional engineer, Mid-Alpha, New Jersey.
All sworn, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just some homework stuff. We have received Mr. Mallon, T&amp;M's, letter of May 2. We have received the Leon Avaki and planning letters of July 13th, CME Tree Experts' letter of April 24th. We've also received various inter-office memos of our mouth commission, fire bureau, farmers advisory, et cetera, which, most of which will be addressed in our various testimony from the different experts this evening. But if not, we will obviously go back and address the points raised in those letters. With that being said, and Mr. Plaskonka being sworn, we have a very brief presentation on the site plan, so you can see where we are and what we're proposing. Then I'm going to have some brief testimony by the applicant on the factual nature. And then we'll have our architect come in and show you the pretty pictures and how nice it's going to look. After that, we'll see where we go with traffic and if you want presentation or you have questions. And we also have our planner, which will clean up the variance testimony. So that's the plan, and we'll move through it as expeditiously as we possibly can. With that being said, do we need to mark any exhibits at this time, John? Are we good to go?
I have two exhibits in front of me. One is a 2007 aerial map of the site that shows the general location as it exists in 2007. Hasn't changed very much, just for observation purposes. And I can give this to the attorney and mark it. We can pass it out to everyone.
We've marked as A-15, Mr. Posh. We'll take care of that for you, Tom. What's the second exhibit?
We have a rendering of the site plan. She's on the board right now, and I have smaller copies if you can hand out to the board.
Mark one and give them the rest.
This would be A-16. End of description again, please?
It's a rendering of the site plan.
Call it rendering of the site.
I'll get them.
Well, I'm just going to get them. Let's get them. Thank you.
Okay, now that everybody has exhibits, John, could you give a... Actually, I guess you got to put your qualifications on the record as a professional engineer first.
Licensed professional engineer, Mid-Alpha, New Jersey since 1968. I have my own company, Concept Engineering. I have appeared before this board and many, many boards throughout Monmouth Ocean and Millsdale County.
Yes, that Mr. Plaskonka be qualified as a professional engineer?
Yes, sir. What's your educational background?
Newark College of Engineering, 1963. Bachelor of Science in Engineering.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cohen, I just have one question.
Sure.
I'm kind of confused here. On sheet three of 10 of the drawings. Up in the upper right-hand corner, you have an aerial map, scale one to 400. Okay, in that map, it's got a hatched area.
Okay.
Okay, if you look at the drawing itself, I'm kind of confused because I don't see State Highway 33 up here. But down below, it shows State Highway on the bigger drawing, and it shows that there's a lot 1805 in between lot 1804 and 33, and I...
That's an old lot number, but that's the property in question on the first aerial I gave you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's the, an old lot number from 2007 when we explored, when they were buying the property. I just gave it because it's easy to see the open farmlands. It's easier to see the woodlands and the woodlands buffer there.
Okay, because I, okay, that's got me confused up there, though.
I noticed that a minute ago. I did have time to change each map, but it's still the same block, 164, lot 1804.
So 1804, what happened to 1805? That's the Route 33? That became 33, correct?
33.
Okay.
Yeah, so the first exhibit kind of shows the fact that you got Burke's Creek. You have the bypass below. You have Oakerson Road up top, and you have the railroad, former railroad tracks to the right going under Oakerson and going through the bypass, although there's no tracks that really exist in the roadway. So it's just some tracks are left there, but it's not usable at this time. So that gives you a sense of the fact that there is woods to the west, next to Burke's Brook, which we're not touching, part of the floodplain and wetlands area. And we're using the area as primarily farmed for the design. Again, just as Todd pointed out, this is in the SED zone. It's permitted use, except for the conditions that we have here, being 20,000 square feet versus 40,000 square feet, and being 2,500 square feet per tenant space versus 5,000. So those are the two elements. We only have six acres to work with, and we try to do best we can. We're near the inspection station. We're in an area where there's a fall field down the road. We have a truck company that's just past us going on Oakerson Road. It's kind of industrial. There's no housing or residential area. The piece to our east, past the railroad tracks, is also farm and farmland, and we maintain that 50-foot buffer. They have corn planted there right now, and we have various crops on our property at this time. So this is a farm property. We're looking to make it an industrial use. It was an approved plan by the planning board in 2007. There were like 11, 13 buildings on there, real small buildings. They approved it. They went as far ahead, has got all the permits. They were shovel-ready probably in 2008, except we had that thing called a recession, depression in real estate, and nothing went forward. And then my clients picked it up in 2009. And because of their experience in this kind of business, having other facilities, they then designed it based on their expertise, and we're going forward with this new footprint.
Lot, lot number 1301, I see an area that says flood hazard area limit. It's on this drawing here?
It's got to be over here somewhere.
Yeah, there's a, there's a flood hazard area to the west, near the railroad tracks. That's an area of very minimal flooding based on the floodplain maps.
Now, is that being farmed at this time?
That's being farmed by other people, not by us, because our, that's off our property, quite frankly.
Okay, yeah, I see where your property line is, but wouldn't you have to give a 50-foot buffer for that, too?
Have to do... I'm sorry?
Wouldn't there be a 50-foot farmland buffer for that?
We have a 50-foot farmland buffer on that side.
Is it, are the plantings within that buffer?
Yes.
There's not supposed to be anything in the buffer?
We, when we get to the report by the Sherry Department of Shari Spuro, whatever we have to do, we will meet the criteria of the ordinance. Now, in this particular case, we have a very long letter I pointed out to you before from Jack Mallon on his input on this plan.
Right.
And we saw that long letter, and we've taken it, and we've discussed it with Jack, who was very thorough. But a lot of the things were of minor nature, so we took his letter and we itemized point by point a response to his letter. And we passed that back to the board. I'm not sure if that was sent out to everyone.
Kylie, do we have a copy of that?
Yes, that was sent separate.
What?
You want a copy of it?
Yes, please. And could I get Sherry and... Sherry and Jen's letters.
There's farmland over here. Farmland's our property. Do you have a buffer?
Yeah, I know all of these got to come back. Sherry, just real quick while she's looking for that. The plantings that are on the right of proposed building number two, are those within the farmland buffer?
Yeah, that's what he's using as his farmland buffer.
Yeah, there's not supposed to be anything in a farmland buffer. No plantings, no four-season.
Oh, you can't plant it?
Yeah, you can plant it.
Why can't you plant? I didn't know, I hadn't heard of that.
Farmland buffer is not supposed to be disturbed in any way.
Well, once they establish it, I mean, our requirements require a berm and a four-season buffer. If it's not there, they're obligated to provide it. That requires them to plant it, and then it cannot be touched.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any problem with providing that.
They always plant in the farmland buffer.
If there's nothing there, it's not, it's not conforming with the farmland buffer requirements. That requires a four-season evergreen buffer in a double row staggered. If it's not there, they're obligated to provide it, which would require them to plant that. And then, once it's there, it's put into an easement, right, and then it won't be touched after the fact.
Yeah, well, there's no maintenance or anything.
Correct, but they have to establish it first, right.
That's what I'm, okay. Yeah, that would be, okay, established and then not touched from then on, unless there's dead trees that have to be replaced. Correct?
On this point, there's a natural buffer that's there, so we would share this plan with Shari and be at the site and try to save what we can with the natural buffer, and then supplement that with the plantings that she thought was appropriate.
Yeah, that's fine. We have to need to do that.
We do have approval from the county board of health in that they've inspected the soil logs. This is property serviced by Well and Septic. There is no city water or city sewer in Howell in this area. There is city water and city sewer in Freehold Township. And I did go to Freehold Township to the administration and ask that we extend their water and sewer, and they said no. Politely. And we do have Monmouth County Planning Board final approval, and we do have this letter from Jack Mallon that we can go through point by point, but maybe Jack can tell us what he wants to ask since we've answered all his questions. Maybe he has some comments, however the chairman wants to handle it.
Okay, let's take Mr. Mallon's letter and just go down. Mr. Mallon? You want to do the, you want to do your letter?
Sure. Sure you want to go through it one more time? Well, I mean, we have testimony of other witnesses that are going to address things in the letter.
That's correct, but like the billboard, you know. I see your response was that you got the approval of the planning board.
The billboard was approved in March of 2012, I believe, or 2014.
Sorry.
I handled the application. It was a conditionally used approval through the planning board. Has resolution to approve. Was built properly with all permits and approved.
So the variances for that would be already granted, correct?
Now, if you remember, there was a time, very short time, that we had permitted billboards, and we had like 21 applications, I think, that came in before the town for that. This was one of them. It got approved, and then they changed the ordinance again. So it's already got, it's pre-approved, but it was pre-approved by the planning board.
Okay. So where do we stand on that? Do we have to approve that?
Well, it's already approved. It's...
Okay, so we don't need the variances.
It's similar to the one we had on Route 9 by the Wawa that stayed. It was pre-existing. Look at it as a pre-existing, non-conforming.
I mean, as Jennifer points out in her letter, it's technically a variance because it's two uses on the lot. It does not come under one of the exceptions that outline in section 188, 56 or 61. But if you look at it, obviously, it's meant to operate on the site. It was approved as a conditionally used, but it doesn't conditionally met, so... I think you just need to put that on the record.
We'll address that in the plan and testimony then. Okay. Any of the other ones you have any issues with, Jack, or comments?
No, I mean, I have, I made a series of notes. I was waiting for his thing. One of the things that he, I emailed him, I guess today, when I was preparing, they have a sidewalk across the front of all the buildings, and I asked them to make that six-inch thick, because if you look, they have overhead doors. If you're going to ride in over the concrete, you want to have six-inch and have it in white fabric or the...
Number four, bar.
Polyethylene fibers.
So we agree to that?
The, another item I, I mean, obviously, you have to go through, but he's got loading areas in the front yard. But keep in mind, he's got two front yards. He's got a front yard on the highway and on Oakerson. And he's got, the way he's got it laid out, he has his farm buffer on one side, and he's got the stream on the other, so...
Right.
He's put them basically in the front yard with the loading areas, and I think his dumpster is also in the front yard.
Yes, it is.
So those. I do have a little question on the articulation that was submitted. It's kind of hard to follow.
Are we going to have the architect address that specifically?
Yeah.
And they have renderings to show you it.
There's eight million lines on the map they sent me, and it's hard to follow. They may have to move it. The other question I had was that the architect plan actually showed three signs. Showed one sign with the address on it, then it had two signs that would show where each unit is. But the engineer plan didn't have anything on it. I think Mr. Plaskonka responded back that it would only be one sign.
Three signs, Jack.
Two signs?
Yeah. One for each building.
But you're going to have a main sign also. You have a main sign out of the road, and you're going to have a sign for each building. That's three signs.
Let me refer that to the architect.
Right, you have directory?
Yeah, three signs. I'm sorry, Jack, yes.
There's two. Wait, explain to me. You have a, you have a sign out front that shows the business park, and then you have one and two that shows the directory, directory. I count three.
Correct. Yes.
But I don't know where the directory signs are going.
I think the architect will explain that in more detail when he gets up.
Well, can you guys explain where on the site it's going to be located?
Get some more in. We can talk.
Yeah, I can explain where they are physically on the site.
This is David Collins, the architect. David, just for the record, would you put your qualifications on the record as a professional architect, please?
Sure. I hold a bachelor of architecture.
Use mic, please.
I hold a bachelor of architecture from Roger Williams University.
Because we're struggling to hear you and John as it is.
I hold a bachelor of architecture from Roger Williams University. I'm licensed to practice architecture in New Jersey and New York. I'm an CARB certificate holder.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Yeah, David, we have a couple exhibits to mark. Tom, I hate to bother you, but we have two renderings from the architect.
What numbers are we up to?
Todd, they're going to show the, where the signs are going to go? I mean, I think we're still on that item, aren't we not?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we're jumping all over the place.
Excuse me.
Well, he asked me what I had an issue with.
No, no, I got it. I appreciate that. We'll get it.
The location of the sign should be located on the site.
Yeah, can we...
They are.
They are?
You want to mark these?
Yeah.
Well, right now, they seem to want to talk about the signs, so let's show them where the signs are on the site, please.
I cannot hear one thing you're saying.
He didn't say...
You've got to speak up.
He didn't say anything yet.
He didn't say anything yet.
It's been very difficult to hear anything since you guys started. Please speak up.
Okay. You all have the aerial map, so you have the initial sign here advising of the park. And you have the two directional signs at the...
What's the exhibit numbers?
Entryway to the parking area. And they're shown, this is the sign on the roadway, Associated Business Park, over here. And then the other signs are the ones on this plan, one and two for the identification, located over here.
I don't see where the signs are. You've got one somewhere right here.
I just see one in the front. That's what I saw.
I don't think they know. Yeah, this, you're describing something. Is it going on the island?
Yes, and I can show exactly in front of you.
That's, as you come in, there's, there's two islands. There's, there's an island when you first drive in. You're going to put them there.
The two directional signs locating each of the two buildings are in
Well, it's an island.
The west island inside the parking lot. Those two directional signs, so as you pull into the site through the entrance, you're greeted by those two signs, so you know which way to go for building one of two.
I understand that, John. All I'm saying is it's not on the plan.
It should be on the plans. That's what we're trying to say. Is it's very difficult for us to do this on the fly. It's like, this is, application has been pending for quite some time. This stuff should be on the plans.
So the two parking aisle islands that are in the... So the two parking aisle islands that are in the parking lot is where the signs are going?
No, I think they're in the one. I think. I think it's just in the first one while you come in off the road.
Okay.
No, here.
Put it here.
That's the side of them. This is where the other two signs are going.
Would you like me to pass this rendering around for you to see? You can see in three dimensions.
No, I mean, that would help them, but...
It's not going to help her. See, even in the...even in this rendering here, it doesn't show...
Nope.
The sign.
Correct. There's a box shown in this exhibit.
Which has right up on the front of this drawing here.
That's the main sign.
This rendering that I have has a tree in the middle of that island. So is there a tree going there, or is there a sign going there?
You can use it. No, I got it. That's what's going here.
Could we possibly come back to the sign?
There will be landscaping in that island, but there will be the two signs that appear most readily on this rendering.
Okay. I don't see how it's going to fit, John, honestly.
You got a bunch of landscaping, you have a tree, and now you're going to have two six-foot signs in this little island? Is it really going to fit, and how is it going to fit?
It will fit.
Well, I'd like to see it fit, honestly.
Yeah, we have a long letter from Jack that we didn't want to give you new plans. We talked to Jack about this. We could address that issue on the plans, but we didn't do that because the plans coming in at the last minute would not be reviewed by...
Well, I mean, Jack's letter was in May, so like, last minute is a little difficult when we're at the end of July. I'm just saying. I mean, I get there's no one here from the public, but it's...every week, we're here, and we're like redesigning these applications on the fly because you don't want to resubmit plans in advance. It's not fair to us. I can't opine on how...if they're conforming or not, because I have no idea.
And the monument base is two foot, two inches, you're allowed two foot. Does the two inches make that big of a difference? Why do you need a waiver of variance from the monument sign for two inches? I would think you could make it two feet.
We're going to conform.
So you need a variance for three signs?
Correct.
Basically.
But how can we approve something that we can't...we don't know where...you know, you got it...I agree with Jennifer, you got two six-foot signs that are going to go in an island.
Yeah. So there'll be eight foot tall, and there'll be two eight-foot tall signs in those island, in that island.
Six foot tall.
No, eight, because it's on a two-foot base and it's six foot tall is the sign.
Okay, and there's two signs.
And it's four foot wide.
Okay.
Each one, so that's eight feet.
With the tree in the middle.
But you have twenty...
Eight feet.
And then you've got the radiuses. It's going to be tight.
Why not put them on the side of the building? Why not put one side on one building, one side on the other building?
How about we give my engineer a few minutes to look at the signs?
Okay.
And we'll come back and tell you where they're going to be and how many they're going to be. In the meantime, I'll have my client testify as to like the uses and what we're going to have on site and things like that.
The island is thirty foot long and ten foot wide, so you have plenty of room there. When you landscape it correctly with Shari's input, we can make it work. It's not the end of the world. You have a long letter. I'd like to go through the letter. We'll come back to the sign again at the end, if that's okay?
Okay.
Jack, you have anything else on your letter that you want us to address that we haven't addressed in the comments?
Yeah.
What, excuse me, I'm sorry.
He's asking if you have any more to add.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where you're going to put it. You say you're going to put it near the buildings.
I'm sorry?
Am I running too fast?
They're skipping.
Oh, they're skipping that? Okay. I was still looking at, trying to figure where you're going to put it, I'm sorry. Going to the next item. We talked about the sign base, talked about the articulation, sidewalk, landings.
Is there curbing in here?
Yes. Concrete, if I remember right, correct?
Concrete curbing, yes.
Concrete curbing?
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Yes, sir.
And I don't mean to be rude in any way, shape, or form. I think the whole presentation is getting a little disjointed because we're going to questions off the thing, and I understand everybody's trying to be helpful and get it done quick, but I think it'd be really helpful if we have our...my client come up and testify to what's going on here on the site, and then we can have the architect come up and testify as to how we are pretty much complying with everything and show you some pictures of what it's going to look like. You get a better feel for what's going on, because I think we're getting sidetracked on important issues, but I don't think that the meat and potatoes are of the application. In the meantime, I'll have my guys relook at the sign and figure out where we're going to put it, and we'll let you know that in a little bit.
Okay.
Is that be okay?
Professionals, you have a...Jackson, do that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Harold, would you please come forward? Thanks. Okay, would you just please identify yourself for the record?
Good evening. My name is Harold Levall. I'm the managing partner of this project.
And you're obviously the managing member of Associate Business Park, correct?
Managing member of Associate Business Park, correct.
And you're obviously familiar with the application submitted this evening?
Yes, I am.
And as I mentioned with my opening, you and your partner operate for other similar facilities in the area, Green and Freehold, and one at Auburn.
That's correct, and all of them are multi-use tenant industrial facilities.
Okay. And what type of uses do you anticipate would be here for the office warehouse type facility?
Our intention here is to provide space for small contractors. There are quite many of them in the area that are looking for small space. There are a number of small startup e-commerce businesses that are looking for space. Many of the local service businesses, small light manufacturing, that's basically the type of tenant that we've had in all of our other facilities.
And those are typically what you're looking for in this facility, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And you find...and obviously, there's no retail sales of any nature?
No, no, we will not have any retail sales at all.
Okay. And you find that the 2,500 square foot size works best for these types of uses?
Yes, that's pretty much the demand in the marketplace right now.
Okay. And what are your typical hours of operation for a facility like this?
Generally, it would be 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, as most businesses operate.
And what about number of employees per use?
We've had various employee...various tenants in similar sized buildings. They range between four to six employees within a 2,500 square foot unit. Generally, you've got an owner or an owner and a partner.
But Mr. Collins, are you willing to stipulate that that's the maximum employees? I mean, you don't have tenants for these spaces, so how can you testify to the number of employees when, you know, it depends on what you're putting in there, right? I mean, do you have...
One of these places before they're built have tenants.
I understand that, so I don't know how you're testifying to the number of employees if you don't have tenants.
My client is testifying based on his experience of owning four of these type facilities. Generally, what type of numbers you have, and he's telling you what types of businesses they anticipate going to be. So he can definitely testify to that.
Yeah, but are you going to limit yourself to six employees?
That's what I'm saying. You're testifying that six per space, but...
No, we're giving you a typical representation of...there could be four in one, it could be seven in the other, there could be six in one, it could be...
But it could also be 20.
No, 2,500 square feet would not be a space that an individual who runs a business with 20 employees would rent.
So you're willing to stipulate that you will not allow a user in this space if there's more than six or seven employees?
I could pretty much attest to the fact that there wouldn't be a user who would look for space if he had that many more employees.
So would you put a condition in the resolution to that effect?
Well, understand another thing. There are businesses that may have 20 employees, however, they're not in the office or not in the warehouse, they're out on the road.
That's not what I'm asking you. What I'm asking you is, you do not have users for these spaces, correct?
That's correct.
And let's say you've got a user that came that wants two of these 2,700 square foot spaces to the tune of 37, 38 square...five thousand square feet.
Yes.
And let's say they had 20 employees. Are you willing to stipulate to the board that it's going to be seven or less? That's the issue that I'm having, you don't have users for this space. Let's say someone wanted to rent an entire building and not break it up the way you have it shown on your plans. You don't have users, correct?
That's correct.
So I don't want the board to say, okay, well, we're going to talk about six employees or less in each of these spaces, and therefore, we only need this much parking. Well, you have no idea who's going to occupy the space at all.
Well, generally speaking, when an owner of a business looks to rent a space, he also tells us how many parking spaces he needs. There is often times where we have rejected various potential tenants because of their over requirement for parking.
Understood. I'm just saying that this board typically likes to understand what the maximum use of the site is going to be.
And I understand that.
And therefore, will put conditions in your resolution to that effect. So I'm cautioning you as to saying six per space, because if that goes in your resolution, that could limit your ability to lease the space to someone that has more than six employees. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I think...
I mean, Mr. Chair, is that typically what we do?
We usually try to conform to, you know, how many employees are going to be on the site, period. You know, they...I just wouldn't limit yourself.
I don't intend on limiting myself, sir. The parking is what limits you, if anything.
Jennifer, your comment in your letter was that we were overparked.
I don't disagree that you're overparked. What I'm trying to caution you is not to limit yourself to, we anticipate X amount of employees per space, because I know them, that will go in the resolution.
Yes.
And that's the issue.
Just watch your testimony.
I'm just saying, do not limit yourself in your testimony. I 100% think you're overparked, yes. But I'm telling you, if you're going to represent to them that you anticipate six employees per space, that will wind up in a resolution.
Well, with all...and I'm not trying to be a wise guy or anything else. They're testifying based on their experience that they have in the real world today.
I get it.
Did they state that we don't...we think we're going to have 15 per space? Then we're underparked?
I'm not saying that, Todd, but I'm saying what has typically happened when we have heard testimony for flex space, when you don't have actual users for the space lined up, they're trying to get what the maximum use of this property is going to be. And if you say six employees per space, that's going to wind up in a resolution, which is going to limit you in the long run. That's what I'm trying to say. You can't...that could be based upon your experience typically, but you don't know 100% how many employees are going to be on site. And our parking is based on square footage, it's not based on employees. So I agree, you're way overparked for the site. But I just want to caution you because I don't want a condition to get into the resolution, and then you wind up having to come back here asking for relief of a condition because you have a user that exceeds the six employees per space, because that's what winds up in a resolution based on the testimony. That's what I'm trying to do.
We're definitely not asking for a limit to how many employees we need to have.
Well, that's why I'm cautioning you, because that's typically how we operate.
Okay.
Okay. Could be six or less, or could be six or more per space, correct?
Just based on our experience, I'm here to tell you that we've seen that we've had small businesses move into these 2,500 square foot spaces. No one who has 10 or 15 employees is going to rent 2,500 square feet, because they could not even operate in a space like that. So I'm using the number six, not necessarily because that's what I want to testify to, and that's what I think is what we're going to need. I'm using it to give you an idea as the board, from our experience, as to what type of businesses generally move into spaces of this size.
Okay. Now, is there any outdoor...usually, these companies, do they have any vans or stuff that's going to be parked on site?
Yes, as I said before, one of the qualifications, when we ourselves look at a potential tenant, we try to determine whether or not it fits with the environment that we have there with the existing tenants, and that they can in fact live there in harmony with the rest of the tenants. So if someone came to us, just as if they came to us looking to employ 20 people in a 2,500 square foot unit, which is over...which would be way undersized for a business of that size, we again would ask the same question, how many parking spaces do they need? We're not allow...we're not going to allow someone who's operating a school bus company to operate...to move into a 2,500 square foot unit and move in 30 school buses into that area. I don't mean to use the exaggeration, but it's the best way to exemplify what we're talking about. Yes, you're looking at a painter, a plumber, an electrician that has some van, service vans, or panel trucks. But again, we will qualify every tenant for what works best in the community that we're building here.
Okay. And you're...just now, I'm asking this hypothetically. In your experience with your other buildings, a typical, say, electrical contractor, approximately, how many vehicles does he have that he keeps on site?
An electrical contractor who's going to rent a 2,500 square foot unit generally doesn't have more than three or four vans.
Okay.
There are electrical contractors that have fleets of 20 and 30 vans. They're not moving into 2,500 square feet. They're usually looking for a freestanding building of their own where they have 30 or 40 parking spaces or more, and this is not a facility for them.
Unless they take the whole building?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that's why we allocated, on average, approximately seven parking spaces per unit.
Okay.
Some of the other questions?
Well, I have a question for you, if I could. Do you expect to store any of the vehicles here overnight, or do you figure parking lot will pretty much be empty in off-hours?
There may be some vehicles that might be left over overnight. I don't expect it to be a parking lot for overnight storage, if you will. No, I wouldn't say that. But each of the businesses could decide to leave their service vans in the parking space while their employees use their private cars to go home and commute back and forth to work.
Harold, some of the other questions that were raised in Mr. Mallon's letter, what type of deliveries and vehicles do you anticipate at the site?
I think our traffic engineer would probably handle that better than I, but generally speaking, again, because these are small businesses, you're not seeing 40-foot tractor trailers moving in and out of here all day long. Small businesses tend to have smaller deliveries. UPS vans will be coming in, FedEx trucks will be coming in, maybe some common carriers once in a while, but for that, we have provided space at the ends of each of the buildings for some of the larger truck deliveries, one at a time.
There was a question about lighting. Your outside lighting would be on timers?
Yes.
And there would be restricted hours of operation?
Yeah, we probably would have those lights turn on at sundown and probably stay on until about 9:00 or 10:00 PM. I don't expect it to be on all night long.
I have nothing further. Mr. Levall of the board has any questions?
Any questions from the board?
When you testified for light manufacturing, what do you mean by that?
Small assembly operations. Let me see, I'm just trying to think. For instance, we have...in one of our facilities, we have a young man who produces small wooden cabinetry, kitchen cabinetry, things like that. Another fellow that might...like, they do closets in various homes, so something small like that.
And how do you secure one space from another?
Oh, there are demising walls in between one and each and every space, absolutely.
So there's no entrance to the...from one from the outside to the inside?
Oh, no. No. There is a front entrance to enter in to the office space. There is a front drive-in bay as well, and there is rear egress for fire and emergency exits.
Is there any second floor, or this is just one floor?
One floor, 24-foot ceiling, approximately.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me how big that trash container is? And that- is that the only one that you have for all fifteen units?
I believe we were planning a second...
There are two.
Is one for building?
Where's the second one?
It's in the mid- it's, if you look at the...
Under the billboard?
...of the property, it's in the middle of the parking lot.
Yeah, under the billboard, I think you did.
Yeah, so it's right, if you see...
It's under the billboard.
...the billboard, it's right there.
Is that that little square where it's...
Yeah.
Way down in the dark area?
Yeah. Again, these businesses, again, are producing waste, which is mostly office waste. And when they get deliveries, yours- they receive corrugated boxes where the materials come in. And those are- the corrugated boxes are generally wrapped up and they're crunched and wrapped up and thrown in there as well. But we wouldn't have any sort of special debris, if you will.
They're not bringing back, like...
No, no, no.
Metal or stuff like that?
No, 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 we wouldn't permit that.
From the work for the day?
No.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Any biohazards?
No biohazards, and, uh, we avoid any businesses that might have an environment, a negative environmental impact as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you put in your lease, uh, uh, no hazardous materials to be stored?
All of our leases have, uh, at least a two or three-page, uh, clause regarding environmental requirements.
'Cause you- you mentioned painters. I don't know how much, uh, paint would be stored in a- in a warehouse?
Well, first of all, i- i- if paint is stored, there are- there are requirements that they themselves, as tenants, know that they have to store. But then again, uh, we would- may not- we may not allow them to store flammables in there to begin with.
Well, that- that's why I asked you if it's in the lease.
Um, I don't recall exactly, uh, but again, each lease is written in some ways also as it- as it pertains to each particular tenant.
I- I look at, uh, guys that do small engine repair, what they do, when they get rid of oils, things like that.
Yeah, we- we wouldn't have any, uh, automotive... We- at least, let's put it this way, in our existing facilities, we're very sensitive to that. Uh, we haven't allowed, in our other facilities, automotive, uh, repair, if you will. And we have some automotive assembly type of processes, but nothing like auto body repair or, uh, auto maintenance, if you will, in the standard format.
So, you do put a restriction in on hazardous material?
Well, we don't necessarily put a restriction in the lease, but we put a restriction on before we let them move in, because we wanna protect our facility. We're very sensitive to environmental standards and keeping everything as clean as possible.
But do you have an issue of that being in the resolution, as restricting aut- auto body shops and...
We would have no problem with auto body shops, uh, in- in...
Or mechanic shops?
As you refer to them, as- as an auto body shop or what a gas station might do, or auto repair in that nature. But there are businesses that have approached us. For instance, we have one, uh, tenant that assembles electric, uh, carts, almost like a- like an electric golf cart.
Right.
He imports all the components and assembles them. It's a beautiful little operation, immaculately clean. There is no, uh, other than some minor bits of, uh, oil and grease that they use. It's a- it's a beautifully clean operation. So, that's the kind of businesses we're looking for, are green businesses in that regard.
But I- but as far as auto body, auto painting, uh, auto repair?
If you wanna put that in your resolution, by all means, we would not want it in our building anyway.
Jack, do you have a problem with that?
I'd like to see you put it in your lease so you can enforce it. Because if you say, you know, you get a painter in there and he comes back with all these cans that are just about empty, and they start throwing all the paint cans in the dumpster, you don't want that there. But if- if he does it and you tell him not to do it, how do you enforce it if it's not in the lease?
I don't recall. We- I think we have something in our lease about hazardous material. Right. They don't usually bring their paint in. They usually pick up their paint at H- at Home Depot and they go in. But I understand your point. Uh, we could- we could feas- we could feasibly add to our lease that, uh, hazardous materials would be, um, carefully monitored.
I would, uh, like you to do that because I don't agree with the occasionally, you know, thing, where if you have it in your lease and they're violating it, you could put your teeth in it if you want to.
Yeah.
So, it should be in there and not like, well, you know, they don't usually...
This is a very... Are you talking about specifically biohazards? Is that what you're talking about?
No, he's talking about hazardous materials in general.
Yeah, hazardous materials in general.
Flammable hazardous materials.
You don't want them...
We don't have a problem with that.
Oil-based paint?
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that.
Oil-based stains, varnishes, of that nature?
Agreed.
Not just latex. Yeah, but I- I- I would be very careful with that, because if you do get a cabinet maker in there, he's gonna have stains, he's gonna have varnishes.
Yep.
So, you know, and that's a pretty clean business.
We have- we have a substantial environmental clause in our, uh, in our lease. We do maintain, if I recall correctly, we maintain our rights to determine whether or not, uh, the materials they keep on- on premises are within our requirements, as well as the fact that they must comply with all EPA standards and DEP standards.
Right, that's why they disqualify them.
So, that is in our lease, um, in a more general format. To start naming all the different materials that we allow or disallow is- it would be a little bit, uh, difficult to manage. But, um, they must comply with local and state DEP and EPA requirements. That we always have.
What about fiberglass companies like countertops, doing the fiberglass? Do y'all allow that, or...
Well, uh, again, there- there- we have had in our facilities, uh, not what you were considering, their granite top- uh, count- countertops.
Right.
Um, it depends on the nature of the particular company. Some of these granite houses, uh, need a lot of outdoor space to store their blocks of granite, their slabs, if you will. We wouldn't be able to provide them with that capability. So, if they merely wanted to, uh, install granite that is already pre-cut or granite that, uh, they can store inside their building, by all means, it's not a problem to us. Uh, that's not an environmentally hazardous product. It's a natural product.
Think you were referring to the fiberglass, um, surfboards. Now, when you get in there, you got- you can have yourself all kinds of, uh...
You're right.
Uh, hardeners and fumes, proper ventilation, so forth, uh...
Believe me, we're not looking for petentes like that.
Okay, all right.
Again, uh, it- the proper use of hazardous materials is, uh, is just as important to us in our own buildings as it is to the town.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more.
Yes, sir.
You have a- a problem with the limiting yourself to no outside storage?
Oh, there's definitely no outside storage.
Okay, I just...
Well, outside storage of materials, correct?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's what he's referring. He's not talking about refuse.
Right, the vehicles, okay.
On vehicles.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not worried about... You know, how would you get a delivery of granite and it's sitting out there in the parking lot?
No outside storage of material.
Good. Uh, Mr. Cohen, do you mind if we take about a ten-minute break?
It's your game.
Real quick. Board's gonna take a ten-minute break.
Board will now recess.
Be back at nine.
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanna revisit one point, uh, that we discussed on the break with your professionals and clarify, um, the employee, number of employees that might be on site. Uh, Mr. Levall is still here, still under oath. Um, basically, we've come to the conclusion that there's probably more employees per unit, a square- twenty-five-hundred-square-foot unit that we testified to. So, I wanna ask Mr. Levall again, on average, for your, uh, twenty-five-hundred-square-foot unit approximately, how many employees could be on site at any one given time?
Seven to ten.
Okay. But they're not all gonna be there at the same time, but that could be at any time during the day?
Correct.
Okay. And that doesn't include workers that may work for the company off-site, but that's just what could be on-site?
Correct.
Okay.
Do y'all understand that, board?
Yes.
What they're talking about?
Yep.
Mr. Mata?
Yep.
You understand that?
Yep.
The- the company could have fifty employees, but full-time employees on site would be seven to ten.
And that's gonna be in the resolution?
Yes.
Somewhere up?
That's per space. So, let's say, kind of took up two to three spaces.
So, he could have up to thirty employees.
They could get twenty-one to thirty employees in the three spaces.
Yes, correct.
It's seven to ten per unit as shown on the plan.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do now, unless there's any other questions, of Mr. Levall, I would like to have the architect come up and explain, uh, the signs and the, uh, architectural aspects of the project.
Any other questions of the board?
I had one.
Yes, sir.
The time you stipulated was seven A.M. to six P.M.?
Uh, yes, I believe so, yes.
Okay, but I mean, do you think you may have people coming in after six P.M.? 'Cause I mean, some, you know, I don't know who the tenants are gonna be, but wouldn't you wanna have a little le- you know, leniency with the timeframe?
Again, I- I- again, I- my- my- my testimony using seven A.M. to six P.M. is just a general business hours. However, uh, would the facility be open, uh, for individual businesses to stay later? It's possible. Um, and, uh, but I don't- I- I doubt very much it's going to be twenty-four hours. Not to mention the fact that I don't know that hours in this particular facility, being that there is no one around that area, there's no residential community nearby.
Yeah, I don't think there's gonna be an issue.
It's not an issue, anyway.
I mean, Mr. Cohen, would you prefer something like seven A.M. to ten P.M.?
I was thinking six A.M. to nine, but ten sounds good, too.
Yeah, but I- I'm gonna- I'm gonna throw a monkey wrench here, too. If you've got an irrigation contractor, a lot of them are in the office at four o'clock in the morning, you know, I...
I don't know.
Uh, I- that's why I'm saying, it's difficult to i- i- to- to tell a- a b- small business when he could come in and when he could leave his facility.
Well, being S U D, what is their ordinances?
It's- it's...
It's just the noise ordinance, correct?
It's the noise ordinance. So, while I understand that it's difficult with flex spacing, you don't have tenants, and we don't know who's gonna be in and out, it's still use variance, and you still have to ascertain the negative impact associated with the operation of the facility. So, it's difficult to just say whenever. But what I would say is, is that as long as the site conforms to the noise ordinance of the township and the state, which we use the state's noise ordinance in terms of, you know, impacting sensitive receptors at a decibel level of sixty-five or fifty decibels, regard- you know, depending on the time period, we would take no exception. But I just need Ms. Coffin to just incor- include that in your testimony when you get up here at the end of the day to say that, you know, we anticipate general operation to be between whatever, seven and ten. However, if any operations occur on site outside those- those hours, they would conform to the- the noise ordinance of the township and the state. And that, I think, would cover us, because it's not a typical commercial office operation, and considering they don't have tenants, it's difficult to determine who's gonna be on site when.
Correct.
I agree with you. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Just one question. We have- you'll said about e-commerce. So, if there is a e-commerce business and they have computers, servers, how's the ventilation for these tenants?
When we refer to e-commerce businesses, we're talking about small operations again. Um, somebody who has a couple of products, two or three products that they sell online is what you're talking about. These will all be startups. You're not talking about an Amazon that's gonna come into a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot facility, you know. It- it- these are small people that are starting up. They have one or two products, and that's about it. I- 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 more than likely, they're operating over the- over- with a simple server and nothing more than that.
How do you ventilate it overall?
A server?
No, the, uh, all the different spaces.
Is it air-conditioned?
There's air conditioning.
And it's got heat during...
Yeah, it's a full- full air, uh, H P C system, right. The- uh, keep one thing in mind, the- the office itself, I think, uh, I think we set it up for six hundred square feet, six hundred fifty square feet?
Six hundred.
Six hundred. So, it's small. You're not gonna fit a lot of people in six hundred square feet. And that's- that's where the computers would be.
Now, you- you brought up the e-commerce, the two or three products. So, there will be retail, but it will not be sold retail.
No, no, no.
No, people wouldn't be coming here?
Consumers wouldn't be coming and going, no.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I'd like to call David Collins, the architect, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Being previously sworn and credentials been accepted?
I believe so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, David, before we- I mean, I don't wanna jump into your presentation, but can we- wanna finish up with the sign before we go to the building, or...
I'll see the best for us.
Yes.
Uh, we- I think we- we revisited the sign during the break and the client decided to change something?
I don't even see that.
Yeah, they have a... Mark an exhibit, please.
Was it already marked, though? Is that what was presented?
No.
I don't know if the rendering was marked.
But was it submitted as part of the package?
Yeah, it was.
Yes.
So, it's already...
We have it.
Is it?
No, the- the- these drawings were- these drawings were part of the package are identical. Yeah. These two renderings are not.
Okay, so the renderings we need to...
These need to be...
Uh, we need to mark the colored renderings.
Yeah, here, he'll mark them.
We're eighteen?
What number?
A eighteen, yeah.
A eighteen. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, sir.
I know this is kinda out of his line, but where is the water well?
What?
The water well?
There is a well? Where is it?
By the highway.
Yeah, where- where's it located on the site?
Um, somebody will come tell you that in a minute, one sec.
By the highway?
Oh, it is.
John, you need a microphone, or...
John Paskonk is behind building number one.
Okay, I got it.
Near the bypass.
Right, the loading.
You see it, the loading area?
Got it.
Got it.
I'm looking in reference to sheet number three attached.
He's got it.
Right here.
Okay.
Sheet three.
I don't see those signs.
The territory is marked.
Okay.
Yeah, referring to the architectural drawings, this is sheet A one-point-zero-one of the architectural set. This is identical to the drawing that was submitted, uh, in the package. As described, we're proposing a steel-framed building. Uh, the buildings are- are slightly different size, just roughly twenty thousand square feet. Each one's a little bit less. And what we've done is, we have along the parking lot side, all of the entrances, garage doors, windows, doors for the office areas. On the rear, the opposing side of the parking area, we just have emergency exits towards the back of the site, which is, if you're facing on Oakerson, it'd be over to the right and over to the left of the site. We're- we're proposing a decorative masonry block base for the building, wraps around all four sides, and metal panel above that. Now, you have some pretty robust architectural guidelines in town here, and those guidelines are a really big challenge for this type of building, in particular, most industrial buildings. You know, generally speaking, they're larger buildings. They need open space with high ceilings. Um, so, what we've done to try to address some of the- some of the regulations in your design guidelines is we're introducing a series of canopies over each of the entry doors. So, you have, uh, here, you happen to have two offices coming together. You have a larger opening, and we wrapped one around the corner, uh, facing to Oakerson. One other strategy we employed is facing Oakerson. Instead of having an eighty-foot-long facade, we actually stepped the building back three feet, which is the minimum requirement in your ordinance for long walls, so that the walls that faced Oakerson, the main road, at least had that separation in them. Then, we also took and we added a cornice line to the building. It's a decorative cornice line that wraps across the front of the building. So, both buildings, as you come into the site and look to the left and the right, the articulation is- is on those main facades facing towards the parking area.
Jennifer?
I, I want to talk about building two east elevation. Right on the bottom of that sheet you got, right in front of you. The big, long, blank wall. Yep.
Building one west, or you want to?
I see building two east elevation, that's what I'm looking at. But they're both the same.
They're the same.
They're both the same.
They are the same.
And so I'm here to tell you, that's not going to cut it. Even the, even the west elevation is still, I mean, we have consistently maintained our architectural standards, even in flex and industrial buildings. We want breaks in the building. And when I say breaks, I mean breaks, a three-foot break or something. A canopy is not a break. The, the elevations, as far as I'm concerned, are inconsistent with our standards and we have been very consistent in requiring compliance. So I, I understand that it's a warehouse, however, every other warehouse application that has come before has come up with some way to mitigate it and come up with some kind of architectural design that is in keeping with our standards, and this is not it.
Including the ice rink.
Yes. It is, including the ice rink, yes.
I, I was actually the architect for the ice rink.
Yeah.
So.
You complied with that?
Yeah, you did.
On the front facade, we did. That's correct. We, we introduced pilasters, we introduced some relief on that front facade. The back and side facades, though, it had to be longer than, than, deeper than these buildings, and those backs and sides are, are very similar to, to this.
Except for your buildings' front, multiple roadways here, and the short end of the building are facing the street. So you can absolutely see both the front and the back of these buildings from both roads, as opposed to the ice rink, which faces the road, and so the back you absolutely can't see from the road. So here, I'm expecting compliance on all the facades. You can see all the facades from the roadways. You have two roads, front and back, and you can see them. And this is not a new phenomenon. We require this of every applicant and it's something you're gonna, I, I'm here to tell you, I can't support relief of this requirement. You're going to have to come up with something better.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Where you got your doorways on the rear, come out with the pilaster and put your doors in the pilaster.
We discussed adding pilasters to these rear facades in the masonry area. We certainly can do that. We're willing to do that.
Same way with the front.
We, we won't, won't comply with that three-foot step that's required, but we certainly can add pilasters to the facade.
Well, I'm going to have to see what it looks like. I can't really make a determination based upon the conversation. I'm going to need to see what the plans are going to look like.
And then the same thing in the front with your front doors. You got back-to-back doors. When I bring them out, extrude them out for the entrance ways in.
So one of the challenges we had on the site was to, to lay out the parking and to give a little extra width in the drive aisles for, for the fire vehicles. We're left with a, a pretty tight area in the front of this building. We don't really have room to have columns out in that area, but we could.
How wide, how wide is that sidewalk?
I believe it's six feet.
Six feet? If you come out three feet, you're still left with, you could come with your doors on the sides, entrance doors on the sides.
I'm sure you could do something more than what we're seeing.
We could definitely add pilasters. I'm a little uncomfortable.
I mean, I'd be fine even if you came out two feet. So the sidewalk is six feet, you come out two feet, you're still at a four-foot sidewalk, which is ADA compliant, and still giving some breaks into, to the building.
I'd be more comfortable with two feet, too. I don't want anyone walking out of a door and not being able to see a car coming.
It would still require relief, but I think it's still in keeping with the intent of the design guidelines as far as the architecture is concerned.
You wouldn't have a problem with two feet?
No, I would not.
We, we certainly can add those pilasters.
Okay. So that addresses that. Now, the backside towards thirty-three, you just have to break the building like you did on the, on the Oakerson roadside. Either they had to put a pilaster in there at, at the loading dock, just break it up.
Again, we could, we could introduce more steps if it's required by the board. I just want to touch on, on one subject. There's a report from the fire official in the package. About a year ago, we met with the fire official and discussed these plans. One of the big problems or big challenges to this project is that we don't have a water supply system, public water, which means that we cannot have a sprinkler system. So we very carefully designed these buildings to comply with the building code and fire code without a suppression system. So each one of, of these unit sizes, they, they add up to a very important number, and we're introducing a true firewall that essentially makes, from the building code standpoint, these buildings into two buildings. Be happy to look at adjusting this backside, but I have to be very careful about those requirements. They're, they're very critical that, that we stay under those thresholds.
Yeah, but if you, if you just put a pilaster on the backside of that, that building, you know, just a false pilaster, you know, just something to bring it out, extrude it to break, according to the ordinance.
We have no problem adding pilasters to the front or the back of the building. No, we have no problem with that. It's the jogs and the, and the change in the square footage that, that it creates.
I mean, you're at a maximum square footage. There's no requirement on our end. I mean, I know that there's relief, you need relief required for the size of the building anyway. So if the building was a little smaller, I'm sure the fire official would be fine. So I, I think that what I'm trying to say is, is that the architecture and how this building looks is important. And so I, I get, you have to juggle with the fire official and what have you, and I'm certainly not suggesting that you increase the square footage, and I support the relief for the sizes of the buildings, given where you are and the size of the site. But there are ways that you can, you can come more into conformance with our design guidelines without jeopardizing your circumstance with the fire official. And what I think we're trying to tell you is, is as it is, it's not okay. So you're going to need to do some work on fixing up these facades in order for this board to feel comfortable moving forward with the use variance that you're here for.
But you are willing to consider the three-foot requirement?
Yes. I, I, I understand that the three feet, and I understand it's a warehouse and it makes it difficult. We've had the same circumstance with, like, box, you know, national, commercial retailers that have, you know, backend storage or what have you. I'm looking for something aesthetically that is in keeping with the intent. Without strict compliance, I can support relief, but it has to be something that gives me some kind of, you know, visual break in the building. Because that facade on the rear especially is just one blank wall, and that is absolutely not in keeping what we're trying to do.
Are, are you willing to consider the fact that Route thirty-three is so much higher than the site for those short backends?
Nope. You're going to have to come up with something.
Okay. Good try.
I mean, we've, we've made applicants on existing buildings on Route nine modify their facade to comply. So this is a new building, you can come up with something better than what I'm seeing. So what I would suggest, if the board is comfortable, the applicant work with my office to come up with something that is in keeping with the, the intent. However, in my opinion, they're still going to require the relief. So if you're comfortable moving forward and granting them the relief, I will work with their office to ensure that it is in keeping with the, the design intent.
You're good with that?
I'm okay with that.
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, you have it, Jen.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Lastly, I'd like to just pick up the conversation about the signs.
Yes, sir.
A little bit. These signs were put on the architectural drawings to, to try to show that we were trying to design a sign that fit in with, with the building. So what we've done is we have a masonry base on, on the signs, and we're using stucco or, or ephes with a cornice line that's similar to the building. So what we're, we're proposing is that we keep the, the main sign at the street and that we'll take the two directory signs we were proposing in the island, and we'll consolidate that into one directory sign. So essentially, we'll just eliminate one of these two. I'll redesign the text and the lettering so that you can see which building you're going to, left or right, from that sign. And we will comply with the ordinance. It's an error on my drawing, the two-foot-two was accidentally drawn because we added a stone cap, and we'll, we'll absolutely comply with that two-foot height requirement.
Where are you going to put the sign?
This directional sign will be in the, the first island as you come into the site. So that you know to go to the right or to the left, and the main sign's at the street.
Do you mind working with our arch, our landscape architect as far as the plantings in that?
Absolutely.
Sherry?
They might just have to prune the tree a little higher. It's a, it's a, it's a lower-branched species that they have in there. You might want to switch it. You know, we could discuss that once they have it on the plans.
I got a further question. I don't know how far you go. On your buildings, then, you're going to have, I guess, unit numbers at the doors and then possibly a, just a, a small informational sign on the door that tells what the company is?
My, my client would like to just have lettering on the glass of the door only. That's the only signage they want to allow on the building, would be at the entry door for each tenant.
Well, that's why I said on the door.
Yep.
It limits, that pretty much limits the size of what, what your sign's going to be.
That's correct.
Anything else for the architect?
Jen?
Yeah, I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Your, your equipment on the roof, I take it it's going to be on the roof?
No.
No?
We're not proposing any equipment on the roof. What we're proposing, we actually designed these office, the HVAC for the office area to be a PTAC unit through wall. There's actually a vent, a grill vent shown directly below the window. So that's a, a self-contained package unit. It's very difficult for us to know exactly what someone's going to need, but we don't know who the tenant is yet. If there's a need for a condensing unit, it would be on the backside of the building and be screened. We're not proposing any equipment on the roof at all. The back warehouse areas will be just gas-fired unit heaters. Those will hang within the space.
Well, you make it difficult. The ordinance says, that's why I thought maybe they were going to be on the roof, it has to be screened, but you're, so you're going to put equipment possibly in the back on little pads?
It would be akin to a residential-sized condensing unit.
For air, air conditioning or heating?
For air conditioning, if it was required, based on the configuration of the office. It's, it's currently designed to, to be a PTAC-through-wall unit. In an open environment, that might work. But if it's segmented off for private offices, it would, it wouldn't, it would only really serve that front office.
It's going to be serviced by natural gas?
Yes.
So you, so your warehouses could have gas heaters inside them?
Gas-fired unit heaters, yes.
Okay.
And then, let me, if the warehouses are required to have AC, you would put the condensing units outside in the rear. That, that's what I heard you say?
If, if any of the spaces needed to be air-conditioned, yes, we would, we would have, have to do a ground-mounted unit at the rear of the building.
That would be part of the basin, though.
What, what does our ordinances say about that, Jack?
Well, our ordinance really addresses roof units.
Right.
More so, it has to be screened. We really don't get into, I guess, you could call it accessory structures in the back, something if, if it's against something which would be screened in them.
Just got to be careful on the one building, don't get into the farmland buffer.
Well, that's, building number two, obviously, has the far buffer behind it.
Yes.
Building number one, obviously, will go to the basin, and it's a pretty steep slope in it.
Right.
When it comes off the building. That was my concern and how fire looked at it. Usually, they like to drive around the building.
So I can address both of those. The zone shown on the site plan where the doors and the pads for the doors swing out to the back area, that would be the location for those ground-mounted condensing units. So they would be up close to the building. So I'm not concerned about the detention basin or that buffer. I think we can respect both of those things. Sorry, your second comment?
The other problem's going to be on the other building.
Oh, sorry, yes. So as I said earlier, we, we met with the fire official about a year ago to, to go over these plans and came out of that meeting with an understanding that, that we agreed on the design, agreed on the way that I designed the buildings and that, that they meet the code. In, in preparing for this meeting and, and reading his report, which came after that, I reached back out to the fire official, I sent him an email, followed up with a phone call, and, and we spoke on the phone, I refresh his memory about our meeting, and he assured me that he was comfortable with the way we designed it. So although this report is this way, I, we had that conversation directly about a week and a half ago. So, so it's true, we don't have water on site, it's true, we can't drive around the back of the building. We did make the drive aisles a little bit wider so that it was a little bit easier. And I believe we've offered to, to stripe or paint the front as a fire lane, front of both buildings as a fire lane.
Well, you have to understand, the fire, fire requires thirty-foot aisles, which is, so you say it's a little wider, that's, that's what's required by fire. Your main access aisles have to be thirty feet. Their last report that I have is March fourteenth. They do say that you have to provide fire lanes. You will not allow trucks to load and unload at the rear of the building, which obviously they can't, one side's a far buffer, the other ones, if you look at it, it's steep against the building. I think you're going to need another letter from the fire. That's going to be one of your requirements.
We'll provide that.
Okay.
Did you say they were going to have a fire lanes in the front? There aren't thirty foot.
We could, we could mark the, the front of the buildings, the, the paving in the front of the buildings as fire lane.
What are those parking spaces I see in front of the buildings?
The fire, the fire lane would be?
The thirty-foot aisle.
The thirty-foot aisle that's in between those parking spaces in the front of the building and the parking spaces in the first island. So it's thirty feet wide, that area there, to, to, to put their fire apparatus.
So they can basically have cars in those parking spaces blocking the fire trucks?
Well, they're, they're pretty isolated. There's, there's a couple of sets of three.
Look on sheet three.
Three, ten. Sheet three has all the measurements.
It has the measurements. You'll see the fire coming off the, off Oakerson Road, that's all thirty feet, all the way down the, around the inlets and then back up building two. They, they have the, the fire line, thirty feet.
Right.
Those cars, there's openings in between those cars, so it's not going to matter.
Mr. Buridi, that, that's the reason the fire asks for thirty-foot aisles? So that if you have parking both sides, they at least have a thirty-foot aisle to get in, in front of the building.
No, I understand, no, I understand it, just that I see that he has parking spaces in front of the building.
Yes.
And my experience as a police officer, fire trucks are going to be blocked by these, these cars. That's all I was thinking.
There's only two cars per bay. You know, if you look.
I see it, I see it. But I was just concerned about that.
I agree.
Because they'll put the frigging holes right through the car window.
Yes. I hear you. Okay, any other questions of this witness? Jennifer?
The sign, sign lighting?
No, the site lighting.
The engineership.
Okay.
Your ordinance requires a point-three-foot candles for the lighting average, but not to exceed five-foot candles maximum.
No, it says minimum of point-three anywhere. It's not average. It's minimum point-three anywhere.
But not to exceed five-foot candles.
I agree, but there are definitely locations that are less than point-three.
We agree to keep point-three throughout the site, but we asked for a waiver of the maximum five-foot candles as part of the design requirements, because sometimes directly under the light, you'll have more than, more than five. So we will go with the point-three throughout.
Okay.
But that, that's an average, though, Jennifer.
Well, our requirement is minimum point-three. It's not average point-three.
I know, but he's saying average.
Right, so I don't know, we'll have to see it on the plans, if he's going to revise those plans.
We will meet the point-three minimum, but we will exceed the point-five maximum.
Mr. Pascocca, before you get up, which, what will be lit? Will all the signs be lit? Will the directory sign be lit? Will the sign out at the roadway be lit? What will be lit?
The architect is the lighting man.
Okay.
Our drawings, our drawings call for... Our drawings, our drawings call for landscape lighting directly in front of the signs, shining up at the signs, and we'll make sure they don't shine into the street or anywhere else. So they'll just be right in the grass, shining up, just to light the sign.
What about the directory sign?
The same way, in the aisle, we'll light it inside that, with the landscape lighting.
Will there be security lighting on the building itself?
I can speak from an architectural standpoint. All of our exit doors will have emergency lights at them that will turn on if there's an emergency, the power's out. Those, those lights will go on so that people can safely egress the building.
How about at night? What, what, what will be lit at night? The parking lot lights will stay on all night?
I think the applicant answered before that the lighting would be turned off around nine o'clock. Harold?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
So, so the site is dark once...
After ten o'clock.
After ten o'clock? There's no security lighting over the buildings or anything?
If we need to keep lights on, we certainly can come in.
Well, I, I just wanna know what you're gonna have. Some parking lots, what they do, they might have dual fixtures up there. One of the lights stays on, the other one stays, goes off, but it's a pretty dark area. I'm looking at security, are police riding through?
No problem.
Some of them put security lighting on the building.
We will probably leave a, a percentage of the lighting on in compliance with what your planning office and the engineering office requires.
Okay, you don't propose lighting on the buildings, like, is each tenant's gonna have to be responsible for a zone? A lot of times, you just, you have lights over the doors, security lighting. You know what they do in the self-storage? You ever seen, you know, they have a security light that comes on at night. It's low-lit, doesn't light the whole place up. I'm just asking what's, what's gonna be.
Like I said, we'll probably work with the board and work with the, your office and find lighting that will work and determine what is best for the town.
Well, you wanna know what you're gonna have, that's the only thing.
Well, I'll have to rely on my professionals for that.
Well, I don't think you're gonna finish tonight, so I think you'll be back.
Yeah. Let's plan on having a low light on the building.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying.
Absolutely, we'll have, we'll have some low lighting that will be appropriate for the site.
Okay.
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 Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get our planner on.
Okay. Hey, is there any further questions of the witnesses that were already testified from the board?
Oh, I'm sure I got something.
Keep your mics.
Yeah.
Use your mic. Use your mic.
Who, who, who will testify about the waiver, Todd, for no landscaping between the building and the parking area? Obviously, there isn't any, because you've got a sidewalk in front and parking.
We'll address it, Jack, before the end of the evening.
Mr. Amati, you had a...
I think it was a waiver. It's either in mine or Jen's. I got it listed here.
You're gonna have seven air-conditioning units.
And it's in the...
Not necessarily.
No?
No. Not every warehouse is gonna require one. That's, that's what they testified to.
Well, let's assume I have people that want, most people want air conditioning.
Not, not in their warehouses. A lot of them don't. They use fans.
Equipment screening.
I've been in them. They, they use fans.
No, I, I realize that, but I'm saying, who says that every one of these, let's assume they're all little construction businesses, internal, making stuff. They're gonna want air conditioning.
What are you gonna screen?
It depends. I've seen cabinet shops, they don't want air conditioning. Because the cold in there does stuff with their woods. They use fans.
That's making an assumption that that's what's gonna be.
No, but I understand, but they testified, they don't know what is gonna be in the lights. And they, we don't have any regulations on that.
I don't know if I'm gonna have money in the bank next year, but I may have a bundle.
Yeah.
So...
But we don't have an ordinance regulating on the ground.
I got the custom, okay.
Okay.
Hello?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
You wanna qualify Ms. Coffman?
Yes. Allison, would you please put your professional and educational credentials on the record as the medical planner?
Hi, I'm Allison Coffin. I have a bachelor's degree from Boston College, a professional license, professional planner's license from the state of New Jersey, and I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you. The site that we're looking at tonight is a 6.3-acre through lot. It's got frontage and access from Oakerson Road to the north and frontage without access along Route 33 to the south. The site abuts a township of Freehold to the west, with a property that's owned and developed by NJDOT with the Freehold Motor Vehicle Commission building. And the property to the east is vacant. Site's predominantly vacant itself, with the exception of a billboard structure facing Route 33 near the southern lot line, billboard that was approved by the planning board in, I think, 2012. There are environmentally sensitive areas present on the site, including a creek in the southwestern corner and wetlands, riparian zones, and flood hazard areas. The applicant is proposing to develop the site with two office warehouse buildings and associated parking. In total, the project would create 7,904 square feet of office space and 31,616 square feet of warehouse space, with tenant spaces that are proposed to be between 2,510 square feet up to 2,715 square feet in area. As the site is in the SED, Special Economic District, office and warehouse and light manufacturing uses are all permitted. However, multi-tenanted structures in this zone are limited to a single user unless buildings that have an area, a gross floor area in excess of 40,000 square feet and tenant spaces of 5,000 square feet. In those instances, multi-tenanted structures are permitted. Now, since the applicant is proposing multi-tenanted structures that are less than 40,000 square feet with individual tenant spaces that are smaller than 5,000 square feet, we're requesting a D3 variance for the conditional use of a multi-tenanted structure that is smaller than what the ordinance limits it to. There's also additional variance relief that may be required for the billboard structure, having the office and warehouse use on the same site as a billboard use, which creates two principal uses on the lot. In terms of bulk variance relief, the site complies for area, frontage, side yard, rear yard, height, and lot coverage. And for front yard, it complies to the Oakerson Road frontage, but we're looking for some relief from the Route 33 frontage. 60 feet is required, and as that's technically a front yard, even though it functions as a rear yard, we're requesting 52.2 feet, which is a little bit below, but would conform for a rear yard setback. We're also looking for variance relief for the location of the accessory structure. We're proposing loading zones and accessory structures in both front yards. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the use variance and that the site can accommodate the use despite the deviation from the requested, from the conditional uses of the ordinance, and it's also particularly suited to having the two uses on the site. First, looking at the conditional use variance. The Supreme Court, in the case of Coventry Square versus the Westwood Zoning Board of Adjustment, found that the standard of proof, the special reasons that support a variance for a deviation from a conditional use standard is a little bit different than a straight-up D1 variance. The Supreme Court found that conditional uses are uses that are permitted in a zone subject to the imposition of specific, specific conditions to control the impacts of those uses. So when the board is analyzing a conditional use variance, we should be looking at the nature of the condition, the extent of the variance, and make a determination regarding whether or not the site can still accommodate the use despite the deviation that's being requested from those conditional use standards. It's my opinion that in this case, the site can accommodate the use despite the buildings and the tenant spaces being smaller than what the ordinance limits them to. The proposed use, again, does not meet the ordinance standards for a multi-tenanted structure with regard to the minimum building size and the minimum tenant space. But in this instance, the uses proposed are themselves permitted in the zone, and the only issue being the magnitude, the size of the uses being smaller than what the ordinance anticipates. Proposed variances, in this case, would not impede the ability of the site, the size of this site to function with the use despite the deviations from the ordinance requirement. In this case, the site provides adequate parking. The site provides adequate loading spaces. The site will not create a traffic detriment, and there is no other impact that I can conceive of that would result from the site having tenant spaces smaller than 5,000 square feet and buildings that are less than 40,000 square feet. So in this instance, the site can accommodate the use despite the size of the buildings and tenant spaces that are proposed. With regard to that D variance for two uses on one site, the billboard is a legal pre-existing use on the property. At the time that the planning board approved that use, the conditional use standards held that a billboard could be co-located on a site, provided that that site had uses that were already permitted in the zone. We're requesting uses that are themselves permitted in the zone, so the D variance relief we need is conditional. But it would have met the intent of the conditional use ordinance for the billboard in that it's located on a site that has office and warehouse uses in an office and warehouse zone. However, as we are still requesting two uses where it's not permitted...
Well, Allison, let me just interrupt you. We do allow multiple, multiple principal uses in the industrial-y zone properties in town, so you're okay, considering this was approved in 2012, correct, 2012?
Yep.
And it is an SED site, which we anticipate in many instances, more, more than one type of industrial use. So I would take no exception to that, and I don't think you need relief for that.
Okay, excellent. Then I'm gonna jump ahead to the bulk variances. For the front yard setback, we have a site that is a through lot that has two frontages, but one functions as the rear yard. So there's no access from that Route 33 frontage. The, the road is much higher than the property in this case, and as it functions as a rear lot line, and we meet the rear setback from that, that frontage, it's a technical variance that we're requesting. The, the building provides what would be a conforming setback if that were in fact a rear lot line. The magnitude of the variance in this case is also minimal, and that the intrusion into that required rear yard is limited to the southwest corners of each building, and it's not the full frontage or full rear side of those buildings intruding into that, that yard. The accessory structures and loading zone location. The applicant is proposing loading zones and trash enclosures within both front yards of the site. One loading zone and trash enclosure is located in the Route 33 front yard, which functions as a rear yard and is an appropriate place to have the loading zone and the trash enclosure. The other loading zone and trash enclosure are located in the Oakerson Road front yard, and in my opinion, that's the one that needs a little more consideration. In this case, however, the need to locate them in the front yard rather than the Route 33 yard along that building is due to the odd shape of the lot, which makes it impossible to slide the building forward and place those to its rear, because we have a side lot line that cuts in at an angle towards the street. My recommendation would be that the applicant work with Shari and the other board professionals to ensure that though that loading zone and trash enclosure are located in the Oakerson Road, Oakerson Road front yard, they are more fully screened with landscaping to ensure that there's no impact visually from having that structure between the building and the road. With the last test, when we're looking for variances, whether or not it substantially impairs the intent and purpose of your master plan and zoning ordinance. In this case, though, the buildings and tenant spaces are undersized. This is a type of use that's best located in a flexible zone, such as the SED zone, and it's consistent with the purpose and character of that zone. There's also no long-term detriment to the zone plan that it's caused by approving the smaller tenant spaces. So though the applicant is proposing smaller tenant spaces, it is possible for larger users to occupy more than one space. So you'd still have larger tenant spaces that could be available to larger businesses, but you're also, by allowing the smaller tenant spaces here, accommodating smaller businesses. So designing a project that has smaller tenant spaces meets that market demand for small businesses, ensuring they have a place to operate in Howell as well, but it doesn't impede the ability for larger businesses to also occupy the site.
Jennifer?
I take no exception to the testimony as presented. I agree that the smaller space, you know, we have this ordinance provision that requires 40,000 square feet for a multi-tenanted space with 5,000 square foot tenants. It doesn't really lend itself to this day and age where the spaces are a little smaller and the tenants are looking for smaller spaces. So I take no exception to that testimony. I agree with the issues associated with putting the loading zone and the trash enclosures in a front yard, because both frontages are considered front yards. And I would agree that the applicant should work with Shari to adequately screen those enclosures. And I will defer to Shari in a second with respect to the landscaping. There's a couple of other items that require relief. One is the landscaping within the parking lot, that we require one tree and one shrub for every 10 parking spaces. I do not expect landscaping in the parking lot. What I would like to see is however many trees and shrubs are required, that they plant them elsewhere on the site, not within the parking lot. I don't think an industrial site like this lends itself to those diamonds in the middle with, they never work, and I think it won't, the site will not operate effectively. So I would take no exception to the relief associated with strict compliance, so long as they comply and work with Shari on the number of trees and shrubs required, and they plant them elsewhere on the site. I would like to see them, and I'll defer to Shari, but I would like to see them along the 33 frontage, because that looks a little sparse to me on the landscaping plan. But I would defer to Shari on where she would like to see them, so long as the number complies. I would take no exception to that relief.
Okay, what about the footing around the, the frontage of the building, the landscaping?
Again, it's an industrial building, so I don't necessarily think we need to see landscaping along the frontage of a building. You're not seeing customers or the general public showing up at these. But again, I would like to see them beef up some of the perimeter landscaping.
But they need relief for that.
Correct. They need relief for strict compliance. I take no exception to the relief requested, as long as they work with Shari and put the required plantings somewhere on the site, to her, and I would defer to her with respect to that.
The applicant's agreeable.
And then the only other thing that I have is that we have a stream corridor conservation requirement that requires buffers of 100 feet on each side with the buffer placed into a conservation easement. And I know this is not really your area, but I don't see that on the plans. So if that could be added to the plans...
We can discuss it, I believe, as you yourself can do that, yes?
Yeah.
So long as that, that goes into a conservation easement thing, you would not require relief for that.
Okay, we'll add it.
We agree to do that, as well as add the additional shrubs and trees to meet the ordinance requirement.
Great.
Place around the site.
Agree, and I would defer to Shari with respect to that. And then, Allison, the only other thing I just want you to place on the record is that, and I should have probably asked this of the architect, but I don't really wanna jump around so much, is that the height of the building is like plus or minus 29 feet, and therefore would comply with the height of the structures in the zone.
That is my understanding.
Okay. Perfect. So that's all I have.
Okay.
Right, so a couple minor items. I mean, it's easy to do. Ordinance requires three-foot-high, four-season landscaping around the parking lot. So they have evergreen hedge along Oakerson Road. They really would have to just increase the height of it so they can comply with that. I did, in my letter, ask for additional landscaping along Route 33. The pink symbols that you see, those are small ornamental trees. So I, you know, I had already just asked, just in general, I wanted to see shiitake trees along the parking stalls. Certainly, we could beef up some of the landscaping in the front. Of course, the loading area along Oakerson Road, that won't be fully screened, since that's not really possible. And, you know, it is a little bit tight by the trash enclosures, but we could put landscaping near it. It's not gonna be buffered to the ordinance. What else? You know, only other thing that, they, they haven't provided any tree information. There's no, I mean, you know, obviously, most of the site is cleared, but there is some trees along the east side, along building two. So I can't tell exactly what needs to be cleared or the quantity, but, so they do have to still provide that information.
Okay.
Oh, they did? Oh, I'm sorry. All right. There's a waiver then.
Well, they requested a waiver.
All right, so if you're gonna grant that or not. But they did say that they would work with me and we'd meet in the field, and that would be fine, because I did, it did look like there are some trees they might be able to keep on the site, so we could hand-select them.
Good. You have a problem with that? Work with her on the clearing?
That's fine. That's fine.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mallon?
Yeah, a couple of items. First, I don't know if Allison's going to address the sidewalk along the street and from the buildings to the street, you're going to pass that to somebody else?
I'll pass that to the engineer.
Okay. I have those, those are asked for waivers.
I believe in our response, we did request a waiver of the sidewalk, there's no pedestrian traffic being generated, there's no population near this, there's no school bus stops, and I believe we will request a waiver based on those criteria.
You're going to ask your client if he agrees, you can't testify, so you want to ask Mr. Plisakka if he agrees?
John, did I adequately represent the situation regarding the sidewalk?
Yes, Counselor, there is no sidewalk on that side of the street, there's a farm next to us, there's no sidewalk anywhere near that location, you got the brook there, there's no sidewalk in Freehold Township either for the facility, for the auto...
All right, I have two more items. First of all, I think the board wants to discuss whether we should fence the basin. Normally, in these areas where we don't have a lot of residential, we don't fence them.
I don't think we need to.
My recommend, right, so we would not require fencing, and the other item, I guess, for Mr. Plisakka is, in your traveled way, I think you need a thicker pavement section than you would to the, the ordinance requires in the delivery routes, that you'd have a thicker pavement section, the parking areas can be thinner. You have a, you have a problem doing that?
No problem at all.
Okay, that completes all my questions, sir.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Questions of the board, of the planner?
No.
Okay, Mr. Cohen?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a traffic expert here, but I think we've pretty much addressed, unless the board has any specific questions, Mr. Kennel is here, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think we've pretty much...
Why don't we bring him forward and let him put his credentials on, on the record, that way we have it, and then we'll just let him ask questions real quick.
Sure. Scott?
Right behind you.
Scott Kennel. Scott, would you please put your professional qualifications and educational qualifications on the record as a traffic engineer?
Yes, Scott Kennel, McDonough and Ray Associates qualifies as a traffic expert, I have over 35 years of traffic transportation planning experience, have appeared before this board as well as the Howell Planning Board on dozens of matters. I'm qualified by the New Jersey Superior Court as a traffic expert on land use matters.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Mallon, you have questions?
The only question I would have, Scott, is there any, is there any work proposed in the railroad right-of-way that would be required?
Based on my review of the site plan, no, we would not be doing any work within the, in the railroad right-of-way, and, I mean, I'd storm it, the rails have been removed, so I wouldn't, there's no reason for us, and I wouldn't expect any reason for the railroad company to be out there.
Okay, they provide the proper dedication and widening and everything else required.
We can do everything we have to within our, within our frontage.
Okay, I have no further questions, John. The traffic is, this type of, has very minimal truck traffic, and it's usually early morning, late afternoon, that's really what you see in and out, and usually deliveries, step vans, UPS, FedEx, that's usually what comes in here, or van deliveries.
Well, my only question is, if you have a tractor-trailer, does he have ample room to maneuver?
Yes, he does, I speak with the applicant on their other facilities, they may get one tractor-trailer a month, but it's been designed with a 30-foot wide drive aisles that can accommodate the infrequent tractor-trailers.
And to your experience, those loading areas, that would be for a tractor-trailer to pull in and then unload via forklift and take to wherever they need to take it, correct?
They could accommodate that as well as the box trucks, correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Any questions of the board?
No.
Jennifer?
No, sir.
Shari? I know you wouldn't.
No one.
Jack's done. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Kennel. Mr. Cohen, any further witnesses?
No, that would pretty much conclude our presentation.
Okay, other than what we need to address, you know, plan-wise and the architectural issues, you know, that pretty much concludes, correct?
Correct, and if the board feels comfortable, I'm okay with handling the architecture, should the board act favorably on the application as a condition, it's up to you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, under the circumstances, based on the testimony we've had this evening and Jennifer's comfort with the architect's testimony and the fact that it is an industrial site, I'm pretty sure we could work that out between the architect and Jen's office.
And if we can't, Todd, then I'm going to say flat out that we've reached an impasse and you're going to have to come back and deal with it, but I think in the past, we've been able to reconcile these issues as a condition.
So it asks that the board can maybe possibly consider that we could wrap this up tonight and subject to those...
Well, I'm going to ask my board, do y'all have an issue with them as a condition addressing the architectural issues that came up? If that could be done administratively with Jennifer and your architect?
She can handle that and take care of it.
I'm just going to go by, if y'all are comfortable with that, without actually coming back to the board for, if they, Jennifer can be assured that that's completed, then that's fine, but if you can't get it done, it's got to come back and for further relief.
And is Todd, if you're okay with that?
Yeah, you can make that a condition of the resolution, that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Mallon?
I have no problem, Mr. Plisakka did do a letter addressing almost all the items, a lot of it came in testimony, and we can work with the applicant to conclude.
Okay, and then all, I just got one further question, all storm drainages run to the basin, correct?
That is correct, and roof runoff also is tied to the drainage and to the basin.
Okay, and that's all been calculating?
All been calculated, complies with all of the requirements.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm going to ask the open to public.
Need a motion?
I need a motion.
Motion to open to the public.
Second, by Mr. Amata. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, does anyone in the audience wish to come forward and make a, ask a question or state a comment? CNN, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Make a motion to close.
Motion by Mr. Amata. Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Cohen, would you like to give a summation here?
Mr. Chairman, in light of the hour, I'll just be very brief, I think we've put a lot on the record this evening, and I appreciate the board and their experts working with us to try and work this out this evening. I do have two pages of notes for our conditions that I'm sure Mr. Tropoli will incorporate in his resolution, he and I can work together on that. I think our testimony presented this evening from our planner justifies the use variance and the other bulk variances that we've requested. I think this site is a perfect site for this type of use. I think my client has shown that he's willing to cooperate with the recommendations of the board and their professionals, and I would ask that the board approve the application this evening for use variance and preliminary final site plan approval with the amendments that we've agreed to this evening on the record.
Professionals, you have any further?
No, sir.
Okay, board, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application based on all the conditions and agreements that have been set forward and all the waivers put in place. I feel that we can grant the use variance, and I believe what Allison had to say in her testimony was pretty accurate, and that this will be based on what Shari and Jennifer and Jack comes up with, and if we don't reach an agreement, like we said, you'll be back to see us. If not, you have my motion to approve.
I'll second that, and I think the, our engineering and planning people have to be satisfied with whatever conditions in order to go forward with it. Outside of that, yes.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Amata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Amata?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I'm going to vote yes because I think there's a good need for smaller industrial parks, and because this is on a site that's already leveled anyway, I think it's a good location, and I think all the stipulations that you guys are going to buy to are fine with me, so I'm voting yes, too.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. St. Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Just the further findings of facts, as long as the lighting's adhered to and agreed upon, I vote yes, and all the other stipulations that were agreed, that they are followed through, and good luck.
Thank you very much for your time tonight, your consideration, and we'll make sure to work closer with your professionals to get it done right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any further business of the board? CNN, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I second that.
Motion by Mr. Amata, seconded by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zone board adjustments adjournment at 10:05.